Good evening. I am going to start the meeting by reading the required opening statement. We are fortunate that we then have some housekeeping to do and we will once that is over, start to hear the cases that are before us proceed. So the opening statement is more or less like this. This is a regularly scheduled meeting with the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment, which is being held on Wednesday, the 25th of October, 2017, at 7:30 PM in municipal contact. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this regular meeting is being provided by prominently displaying the schedule of the meeting on the official notice call in the municipal contact and by transmitting a copy of this schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Office, Defense and Time, the TransUnion and ConCurt Paper, New Jersey Inc. A copy will also be filed in the first of print. Could you call the roll for please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Oakman?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Ms. Suri? Mr. Tennebaum? Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have minutes to approve. They were circulated with our package and we will consider the minutes for the 26th of July, 2017, first. If there are any changes needed to these minutes, you should so declare at this point. If not, I'd like a motion to accept and a second to that motion.
So moved.
I have a motion to accept as presented. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
You have a second. And...
Mr. Cohen? Oh.
We need to know who can vote.
I got it.
We could all vote on this, don't we?
No, no.
No, only the people. So can you help us, Attorney?
Alrighty, we'll call the roll on those who are eligible to vote. This is on 396 Mount Lucas. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, they're doing the minutes.
Oh, the minutes, okay.
I can call the roll.
Okay.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, the next set of minutes is for August the 23rd, 2017, and the procedure is the same. If we have any changes, they should be made now. If not, a motion to accept is presented and a second for the motion.
I move to accept.
We have a motion to accept. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
And, yes, okay, so those in favor can vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's the minutes out of the way. And now we have memorializations for 396 Mount Lucas Road. That had the case number Z1717-508. That again was circulated. Are there any comments on this, any members of the board? If not, a motion to accept and a second to the motion would be desirable.
I'll make a motion to accept.
We have a motion to accept. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
We have a second. Attorney, would you?
I will. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
And then the next case is 30 Doran Avenue. That carries the case number Z1616-358. And that again was circulated to you. Saving trees by being printed on both sides of the piece of paper.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Are there any modifications required for this? If not, a motion to accept is presented and a second.
I'll make a motion to accept.
We have a motion to accept.
Second.
And a second for the motion. Could you?
I will. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yeah.
Okay, so those are the housekeeping things. And, I think, yes, that's all of that. And we should now come to the cases. Have you made a decision about whether you wish to be heard this evening? I assume that you have given our attorney an affidavit about circulating notices. Is that right?
Yes, Mr. Wickstead did provide an affidavit. The board had taken jurisdiction in June, had one hearing, had asked that notice be sent out by first-class mail with 10 days' advance notice. The applicant apparently was not able to do that, but what they did do in the past few days was to hand deliver and to, I believe, send by overnight, Federal Express.
We did. I personally hand-delivered to all the properties located on Linden Lane. For those properties whose mailing address was separate from the, you know, the actual address, we sent Federal Express overnight mail to all around the country for receipt yesterday. And then we also delivered, you know, first-class mail notices to the outside agencies.
Yeah, so adequate notice has been given in, as we're, as this is a carried case...
That's correct. I mean, the, this additional courtesy, yeah.
This sort of thing.
The additional courtesy notice was just that. It's not required notice under the land use law.
But it was the condition in a way that the board put on.
And the only reason for that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, was that, as you can tell, I'm not Dan Madrid, who appeared last time on behalf of the applicant in June. He's left my firm, onto Greener Pastures, a better job opportunity, I guess, on his own volition, but he's in the title business now. But he, so I took this over from him and it was, you know, in the transition, this requirement, which I think is laudable, it's not, it's not something I commonly see from board, so it's just not something that we had done, but it was not an intentional act on my clients, purely on myself. Mr. Chairman, members, it, given the fact that we only have six board members rather than seven, but we would ask that you do, I haven't had a chance to fully discuss, you know, the application with my client, if the second applicant is willing to appear and proceed and we could confer and discuss and then come back to, Mr. Chairman, after you've concluded the first application? If that's acceptable?
You want us to, I misunderstood what you said, I believe.
I would just ask that you take the separate, the next application in order, take us out of order, take them first, and that, while that application is proceeding, I'd have an opportunity to prefer with my client.
Oh, you wish to continue the discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak with my client about it, so she makes an informed decision.
So then, we will, we will do that then, and so the case we will address now is the 617 Mount Lucas Road, and that has got the case number Z1717-520.
Thank you.
Is there somebody here for that case? And if so, would you come forward? And there are chairs in the front. I will ask Mr. Bridger to read the essence of his memorandum to the board into the record, and then I'll ask you to present your case.
I'll first note that the noticing is in order and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application tonight. Mr. Bridger will swear you in for the evening. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening? We'll be truthful.
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Thank you.
Good evening. The applicants, Dennis Heller and Barbara Skin, are the owners of 617 Mount Lucas. They are looking for a C1 or C2 variance to install, allow the installation of a shed within the side and rear yard setbacks, in exception to the required ordinance. Properties located in RB Zone is subject to the Use and Bulk Regulations in accordance with 10B 253, 255, and 246 of the former Princeton Township Land Use Ordinance. The existing single-family use is permitted as of right. The subject lot is noncompliant with respect to the following bulk requirements. The required lot area is 130,680 square feet, or three acres. The existing lot area is 38,768, which is slightly more than 3/4 of an acre. And they're also noncompliant with the required lot width, which is 200 feet. The existing is 185. And they're noncompliant with lot depth, whereas the requirement's 250, and they are at 217 feet. The applicants are seeking to approval of a shed that is in the rear yard. It's set back 24 feet from the side yard, and the requirement's 35. And it's set back three feet from the rear yard setback, whereas the requirement is also 35 feet. They are seeking either a C1 or a C2 variance relief for this condition. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions, Mr. Bridger? No. Okay, so then if you would make your case, I believe you will need to affirm to our attorney that you will be truthful.
All right. Mr. Heller and Ms. Skin, that's correct, right?
Correct.
If you would raise your right hands, we'll swear you in. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening? We'll be truthful.
Yes.
I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek, counsel. We're here tonight to ask for a variance to the setbacks on our property, so we can put a garden shed in what seems to be the most logical place in the backyard, which is towards the back, near the fence, and 24 feet from the left side of the property. The reason we selected that is really it's the flattest ground, there's no trees to take down, it's out of the way, it preserves the space within the middle of the yard that we use for recreation, and it just seems like the best spot. If we were to actually put the shed in, complying with the 35-foot setbacks, it would put the shed right in the middle of the backyard, which is actually in full visibility then of both neighbors and us, and really right in the way, as opposed to being in a useful spot near the edge of the property. So, as Derek pointed out, and I just want to thank Derek for his help, because we had no idea what was involved when putting together all this, this information initially, but, yeah, so he was very helpful. So we just wanted to sort of put the shed where it seemed to make sense, and, and as he pointed out, we're in the RB Zone, but the, we're actually quite a small property, which was, was actually annexed out of the bigger property that, that surrounds us back in, I don't know, 1987 or something. So it's a small property, and although the, the house and everything meets all the setbacks and so forth, we just, we're asking for a variance so we could put that shed in a spot that makes sense, and in fact is the furthest distance from both our neighbors in our property. If we were to bring it within compliance, we would actually get closer to the neighbors just because of where the houses are and the, and the orientation, so. And again, where it is now, there's, where we'd like to put it is, there's no trees to be cut down, it's the flattest spot and, and makes the most sense. So, and behind us actually is the neighbor's property, and it's just woods, and then they have a pole barn back there as well, so it's, it's not really in anybody's line of sight or anything like that. So we feel that it's certainly within the scope of the intended, it doesn't impair the intended use of the RB Zone or anything like that.
The shed is for storage of...
Yeah, it's a garden shed, so it's, yeah. It's just a prefabbed eight-by-ten shed that we bought from the Dutch guys and...
And the location you've chosen, it's difficult to tell from the pictures I saw...
Yeah.
But it's going to essentially be surrounded by trees and screened from the neighbors...
Correct.
To some extent, at any rate...
Right, right.
By those, they're deciduous trees.
Correct. It's sort of nicely tucked in the trees there, and in fact, if you stand on the neighbor's porch to the left or on the driveway to the right, in the summer anyway, you can't see it. It's well shielded. And as I said, behind us is, is just more open space and a pole barn, so there's no actual people living behind, directly behind us, so I think it's the most...
Outside lighting on the shed?
No, there's no lighting.
No lighting at all?
No.
No.
Yeah, and it's a, you know, you just drop the, it's not a permanent structure or anything, it's just a, yeah, it just, yeah.
Okay.
Have we gotten, Derek, have we gotten any comments from the neighbor?
No, no comments either way, positive or negative.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there anyone here who wishes to address this case? No? Okay.
I visited the, the area, it was a little hard to stop because of just the traffic on that street, and I, just for clarification, I thought, it seemed to me like I saw some structure back there, and I wasn't sure what that was or where it was in relation to where you hoped to put the shed.
So it, it might be...
It looked like, it looked like a little shed or a little barn or something, I couldn't quite...
So we have, the eight-by-ten shed is sitting there, in its intended spot, waiting...
Oh, so that's what I saw, maybe?
Maybe, yeah, if you, if you took a look. But behind it is a much larger pole barn, which is, the Hansels next to us, that's been there for maybe 10 years. But, yeah.
So, what is your pleasure? We'll discuss this if we don't have any further questions. Do you think this is straightforward, and it is a difficult piece of property, presumably?
I do. I think that just given the, the nature of the property and the location and the setbacks that are mandated, I think the location's appropriate. I think it'll have virtually no impact on the adjacent properties, and, and I'm comfortable with it.
I agree.
You agree? Does anyone else have any comments? Okay, well, do we want to make a motion and vote on it? Do I have a motion to approve? And the question of a C1 or a C2 is not clear to me at this point. It is a small piece of property, I suppose, but it...
What would be the most appropriate? What would be the most appropriate?
Well, I, I think perhaps a C2, because despite the fact that the lot is undersized, normally, you know, we're talking about a hardship with a C1, and it's, might be hard pressed to say it's a hardship not to be able to store your garden tools, but I think certainly would meet the criteria for a C2.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, do we have a motion?
I move, we accept a C2.
Okay, we have a motion for a C2 with no added condition. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
We have a second for the motion. So could you call the roll then for this, please, podium?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you, as proof.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have, I say, your honor, Mr. Chairman, Professor, whichever title, we've spoken with, with my client, and, you know, given the, the nature of the application and the sensitivity and the importance to her, we, we really would like to be heard before a full panel of the board.
So you'd like to carry the...
To the next...
To carry?
To carry, to the next...
The third time.
To the next available agenda of the board, whenever that can be, and we know, we know we're busy. I spoke with, with the board secretary, so I know it's busy, but we, we would like to, we would like to carry it through a full complement of the board.
Mr. Bridger, do you know what?
I, we're not sure when we're gonna have seven members. I'll probably have to poll, Claudia and I will probably have to poll the, the board members, find out when we have seven for sure, and you'll probably have to renotice, unfortunately, but, you know, I just, we have full agendas, we're almost booked through the end of the year.
Understood.
So I don't know if I could throw you on a hearing now, or a special meeting.
Is it likely that we can put it in the November meeting, or is it...
We already have five cases for November, assuming everyone's noticing is in order, so it would be tough to put another case. I mean, we, we could...
I saw some people that indicated they weren't going to be here for a December meeting.
Do you, do we have a quorum in November, or, or seven?
No, we don't have seven.
I think we're gonna have to...
Carry it until 2018.
Give us a week or two, we can get you a date.
Understood. We, we would be issuing a courtesy notice anyway, so if we have to renotice, you know, for another, you know, in whichever way is necessary, we, we will comply.
Excuse me, we need an extension.
Yes.
We need an extension, because that expires 26.
Extension is granted, and we will sign a written extension if requested.
Until when?
Do a verbal till...
Sorry?
Well, why don't we say then, an extension through, through, through December 31st, 2017?
That is granted.
Okay.
Or accepted.
I mean, I, I think, Mr. Wickstead, since the application's been carried for so many months, at some point, your client will need to make a decision. Certainly, every effort will be made to get seven members, but we don't need to deal with that tonight, but at some point, that may be something that your client will just have to...
We, we understand that, and it's, it's, I think, from an emotional perspective, my client's looking for a resolution, I just think, you know, but we, we're mindful of that, but we'll look forward to speaking with you about that.
All right, so the...
So the, we will carry the case?
Without date, which means you will have to renotice now formally.
Without, at this point, a defined date, but it's very likely to be in the year 2018, is that what I understand?
It's, it's hard to tell. We'll see if we could have a special meeting, or I just...
Or we could have a special meeting.
We'll just have to poll the board and find out availability of people, so...
So if it's a special meeting, we definitely need to get proper notices out.
Well, you, if we had a date for the continuance, he wouldn't have to do notice, but at this point, not knowing the quorum situation, he's gonna have to provide notice.
Should I, as an abundance of caution, just get a new 200-foot list, or should we just rely on the last list that we did?
Just email us, we'll get you new one.
Okay, we'll get a new list, that way we just have, you know, current, our current roster.
All right. So then we'll just carry you again. I'm sorry about that.
Well prepared, but, thank you.
And when we know what we can assemble, either for a special meeting or part of a regular meeting, we will notice.
Understood. Thank you so much.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, well, we'll try and go down the list. And so the next case for this evening should be the 78 Stockton Street. That has got the case number Z1717-526. And it appears that Mr. Tarr is representing the client in this case.
Please have a seat.
And as always, I will ask Mr. Bridger to enter his memorandum into the record and then open it to you.
Mr. Bridger, before you begin, I'll indicate that the noticing is in order and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
Thank you. Good evening. The applicants, Emily Huffman and Russell Zurich, are the owners of 78 Stockton Street, and they are seeking C1 or C2 variance relief and historic preservation plan approval to permit the installation of an air-conditioning condenser, in exception to the required building coverage. Property's located in the R3 Zone in the former Princeton Borough, and it's also in the Mercer Hill Historic District, subject to the Use and Bulk Regulations set forth in Section 17A, 241 and 245. The existing single-family use is permitted as a right. The subject lot is complying with respect to the applicable bulk regulations, but the subject property is noncompliant with respect to the smaller side yard. The requirement is eight, the existing is four. It's noncompliant with respect to the combined side yard setback, the requirement is 20, the existing is 18. It's noncompliant with respect to building coverage. The maximum permitted is 25 percent, the existing's 37 percent. And there's also an accessory structure at the back of the property, it's noncompliant with the required five-foot setback, the existing setback is two feet. And the applicants are seeking C1 and C2 variance to install two air-conditioning condensers, in exception to the building coverage. They are proposed to be located in the front of the property, off of the parking area. They, they were proposed to be screened with a four-foot fence. The actual variance they're, they're requesting is a building coverage variance, the maximum permit is 25, existing 37, and the proposed is 37.2. The plan also needs historic preservation approval, and it was reviewed by the Historic Preservation Committee, and they did recommend approval, with some general comments that I will share with the board. The applicant is asked if any other locations were considered to cite the condenser. Actually, I don't have the right memo, I'm sorry.
I have a copy of one of the...
Thank you.
...memo today.
Yeah, the condensers, they requested that the condensers be rotated, so access can be gained from the sides instead of the front. The planting bed should be widened to accommodate additional plantings for screening in front of the condenser units, and the plant materials selected for the condensing screening units should be evergreen species. The HPC avoided a subcommittee consisting of the chairperson, Celia Tazalar, and the Historic Preservation Officer, Elizabeth Kim, who's a landscape architect, to work with the applicants to have the final buffering around the condensers administratively approved. If the board approves the, the coverage variance, I understand that the HPC was not in favor of the proposed fence screening that the applicant had proposed, and they did feel that a landscape buffer was more appropriate. And that's the HPC report and the staff zoning report. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Bridger? In the pictures we got handed out, there is a hedge now replacing the fence, if I understand what the squiggly lines on the fence are supposed to represent.
No, you gotta push a little button there, and we gotta get sworn in.
Right.
So just hold everything.
Okay, so we have Ms. Hoffman and Mr. Derek.
This is a...
If you would both raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening? We'll be truthful.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So if, not to get us out of order, we do have some photographs and drawings to show you, but I thought we better, if we could, just do it walking through those. They are a package of four sheets, and if we could have them marked as A1. I think that Ms. Huffman is gonna take the lead here and walk us through these sheets, talking about the black squiggly area, among other things.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Good evening, and thank you for hearing, inviting us to present. Emily Huffman Zurich, my husband Rusty Zurich. We've been residents of Princeton since 2006, and we moved into the property at 78 Stockton in September 2014. So I'll walk you through the exhibits here, but just as Derek said, that it's located on State Highway 206. And the house was built in the early 1900s, well before the zoning borough codes, as I understood, were done in 1975, I believe, according to my research. Okay, so I'm gonna talk through my request, but just to orient you to what we have here. So this is the, this is a view of our property from, if you're standing on State Highway 206, so Stockton Street. The, the next page is just an aerial view of our block, we're Block 36.02, Lot 24. It's in red in the center, as you can see, on Stockton Street. We have a neighbor to the right and to the left of us. The neighbor to, I guess, facing our house to the right, Lot Number 2, is, the properties are very close, as you can see. The next page, which I'll talk about in a minute, is an aerial view of our property. You can see the existing building envelope in red, as well as the proposed... You can see the existing building envelope in red, as well as the proposed location of the two air conditioning condensers in navy blue. You'll also see, which I'll talk about in a minute, yellow dots which represent a combination of wall and window units that we're currently using to cool our home. One, two, two more last quick pages. Page four is a front view of, this is a rendering of what the Historic Preservation Society recommended, which we're absolutely in favor of. We originally had proposed just a fence to match the exterior fence, and they recommended some greenery, and we said that was a great idea, it would look a lot more favorable as well. And then finally, just a decibel rating in case there's any questions around noise. So just to talk through our request, so as you know, we're here to request a C variance to install air conditioning condensers in our very old and very warm house. The two air conditioning condensers would be within the existing building envelope within the required setback. Currently, we use 12, or up to, I should say, 12 wall and window air conditioning units to properly cool our home. It's two and a half stories masonry construction. Six of those units are through the wall units, and we use up to six additional depending on, you know, guests and stuff to cool the rest of the house. And those units, as you could see on page three, are located on all sides and levels of our property. Okay, so the six wall units are Carrier International Series. They're very old and noisy. I looked to try to find them on Google. I could not find them, but I found something that indicated they may have been manufactured in the 80s, and my HVAC company said that they stopped repairing them 10 years ago, so I believe they're pretty old. And basically, we're here today to ask if, to get permission to help to upgrade our cooling system. Essentially, in our minds, we're going from these, you know, six to 12 units down to two. And we're seeking to do this in a way very much in accordance with the C variance, which I read, which is without substantial detriment to public good, and that benefits would substantially outweigh any detriment. And we see three points to this, and I'll try to go quicker, I'm sorry, but thank you for listening. Point number one is the proposed units, we believe will be more attractive for our neighbors. So as you, as you know, the two condenser units we're proposing will be behind a four-foot trellis fence. The current units that we use are visible from all sides. Number two, the, the two proposed units will be quieter for our neighbors. We have a, we're proposing a unit called a Carrier Infinity Unit, and we actually picked it because it's one of the quietest units out there. There's the decibel ratings in there if you'd like. And the decibel ratings, I should not, are no, are without screening, and we're going to have screening both the trellis fence as well as the property fence and bushes. And in addition, as it pertains to the location, we worked very closely with a local architect who knows the area, to recommend locating them on a position in our property that's most beneficial to our neighbors, so the 206 side. We really are very limited in our building envelope where we can put them, and you can see the, the noise of the units, which was, I believe, 66 decibels, is lower than a passenger car of 77 decibels, and is, you know, you've been onto a six, there's many cars and many loud 16-wheel trucks that go down. And finally, just to mention here, if you look on page three, I had pointed out that our neighbor to the right has a very close, is very close to the, to our property line, and we're locating the units behind their front, so they wouldn't hear them from their front yard. In addition, we, we are locating them in the front because that way the neighbors to our left wouldn't hear them in their side yard. So we're trying to think through all possible. And then finally, and I'll, I'll be done in a minute, the third and final reason we feel like this is beneficial is the two proposed units will be more environmentally friendly, basically upgrading our old system with modern technology. I did look at the specifications for the Carrier units. They use Puron, they're both Energy Star rated. Okay, so then, I'm about to close. So the two condenser units, as we know, they're three feet by three feet, and we're here today to talk about building coverage ratio. The total square feet we're asking for is 18 square feet, so that will increase the building coverage from 37 to 37.2. We realize this is over the 25 percent coverage ratio that's, that's recommended. As I mentioned before, we have a very old property that was built in the 1900s, there's nothing we can do about that. But, you know, we also, I tried to do a little mathematics here and look at, I realized the elevated air conditioning units, they don't count versus building ratio, but when I tried to add up the linear square foot feet, I came to approximately 25 square feet sticking out of our house. So what we're basically trying to say is, you know, we are going from something that's more, you know, virtual building coverage to less, and we, my point is, is basically the visual and the noise impacts, we're hoping will benefit our neighbors. So in closing, we love our home, we love our neighborhood, we would not want to do anything to, to take away from the livelihood of our neighbors at all, and we are hoping that we've thought about bringing a proposal to you that helps, helps our home become more modern and environmentally friendly in a way that benefits the community. So thank you for listening. I worked very hard on this, so thank you for, for listening to my thoughts.
I have one question, maybe I missed it somewhere. What's the height of the units?
The height?
Yeah.
Oh, they're, well, the, the wa, it's, I think it's, they're three by three by three and a half-ish. Actually, I have the specifications. The, the wall will be four feet trellis to cover anything above it.
And the unit's not higher than the...
There's a detail, the fence is three feet eight, that looks like it's an inch or two below that original design.
That's fine, thank you.
I just have one quick question.
Yes.
I, I understood that the Historic Preservation folks suggested that you turn them so that there's sideways access.
Yeah.
Is that also because the original drawing had removable, the fence was removable? Is that because this, this new trellis won't be removable because it's planted?
Well, I think, yeah, I think so. I think it was because, right, we wouldn't want to disturb the ivy that we'll be growing up. You know, we've also, I've talked a little bit with my builder in terms of like, could we create a fence that, you know, works with a natural ivy landscape? But yes, that's why they asked them to be turned.
So you will be able to access it without...
Yes, yes, thank you, yes.
Because there will be enough room to walk around each of the units.
There has, yes, absolutely.
Even when they're turned sideways.
Yes, yes, and I, they're actually, there's...
Actually, normally, you only need access to a relative...
Yeah, they're square.
Oh, I see.
They're square. So I just think they, you know, just in terms of...
There's a small piece at the back that you need to be able to get in and tweak every year.
Exactly, yes, thank you. Yeah, they're 35 by 75.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And the air rejection is on.
Uh, yes, yes, yes.
So after any request for public comment, we're ready to sum up, I think.
Is there anyone in the audience here to address this case? Seeing no murmur of, so why don't you...
I perceive this to be a classic C2 variance, that replacing 11, 12, the various air conditioners that they stick in the windows that are old and clanky and noisy and face toward their neighbors, to replace those with new and efficient units that are face out toward the street and are shielded visually, supports the general welfare, the very first of the purposes of zoning. So that's the positive criteria under the C1. The general welfare has been benefited. If you look at the negative side, we can't perceive any negatives to putting, adding 0.2 percent to the coverage in a situation where this old house already exceeds the coverage. Doesn't, we oftentimes, you hear, have setback cases with air conditioners, and this is not one of those cases. It's not encroaching into the setback. It seems to be in the right place as a good neighbor location. So we think that we've met the standards for a C2.
Mr. Tar, and the HPC conditions are acceptable to your client?
Yes.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Any comment? Seems to me to be very sensible.
I think so.
I have just a question, it has nothing to do with it, but I don't see any units in these pictures. Do you carry them in and out for the summer and winter?
So the six wall units are, they're on this, on the alleyway, and there's one here, one here. The six window units, yes, we carry them in and out summer, correct. And yes, the one facing the street is in the attic, which you probably can't see in that picture.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any other question? Do we have a motion? Seems to me an eminently sensible thing, so. I don't even, I don't even think of any conditions to...
Okay, thank you.
Which is unusual.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve? Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
We have a second to the motion. Would you call the roll for us, please, Gordon?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floy?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you, it's approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we come to the last case we should hear this evening, which is 220 Snowden Lane, and it carries the case number Z1717-532. If you know the ritual by now, I'm going to ask Mr. Bridger to say something, and then I'm going to give you a chance. And Mr. Tar will see that I do it fair.
And I'll note that the noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
Everything's in order, huh? Good. So, Mr. Bridger. Okay. Brett and Catherine Barlag are the owners of 220 Snowden. They are seeking a C1 variance to permit the expansion and roof raising to permit a second floor and construction of a slightly steeper pitched garage roof in exception to the required prevailing front yard setback. Subject property's located in the R5 zone and subject to the use in bulk regulations in accordance with sections 10B, 253, 255, and 246 of the former Princeton Township Land Use Ordinance. The subject lot is noncompliant with respect to the prevailing front yard. It's complying with respect to the applicable bulk requirements, but it is not complying with respect to the front yard, which is prevailing. It's a new ordinance that took effect at the end of last year, and the prevailing front yard on the Lee Brook side is 64, and the existing is 26. The requirement's 64 and the existing is 26, so. The applicant's proposing to reconstruct the existing residence on the existing foundation and first floor plan. The reconstruction of the second floor will expand the house from three to four bedrooms and create additional living space in the attic. The existing of the height, the height of the house will be increased from 20 feet six inches to 31 feet. There is no height restriction in the R5 zone. It's controlled by the one-to-one height to setback ratio, which it complies with. They're also proposing a new front porch, which is permitted as a right. The applicant will require the following variances for the prevailing front yard setback. On the Lee Brook side, as I said earlier, the required prevailing front yard setback is 64 feet, and the proposal is an existing condition. It's an expansion of an existing degree of noncompliance, it's 26 and a half feet, and they've requested consideration under the, the C1 zone, so, or C1 variance, excuse me. Do we have any questions, Mr. Bridger? So, Mr. Tar.
Thank you very much. You've heard the basics. We've got some slides to show you that, you can see them on your screens. If there are just a couple people in the audience, I'll just indicate if anybody wants to see them, they can come up and look over our shoulder if there's anybody who's interested. The overhead projector seems to be broken, so we're, we'll do our best, and we thank you for your patience. You're going to start off with...
I can just jump in.
Well, why don't we swear you in first?
Sure.
Mr. and Mrs. Barlag, if you would raise your right hand, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
So thank you very much for the time and opportunity to be heard. I'm Brett Barlag, this is my wife, Katie Barlag. I'd like to, you know, quickly get to some of the more technical aspects, which we've presented in the slides, and we'll walk through each of those. But just some context to who we are. We first moved to Princeton in 2004, started our family here. First home was on Hamilton Avenue. After five years, we decided to move just down the street to Snowden Lane, which in the current picture that you're seeing on your screens are, the house that we purchased is House One, which happens to be directly across the street from our new house, House Ten. After a year and a half at 206 Snowden Lane, we moved away to Maryland, and Princeton called us back. We love the community, and in particular, we love Littlebrook. So as we were thinking about coming back to Princeton and decided to do it, we were shocked to have the opportunity to purchase the house next door to our old house. The house next door to our old house, House One, our old house, we actually did renovations to that home, just within the existing structure, exactly as we're doing here in the existing footprint, and I think much to the delight of our neighbors because it kept in character with the neighborhood.
If you're done with this slide, we didn't identify the slide deck, and I know Ms. Casey wants us to do that, so we'll call this A1. There are a series of slides. We've just looked at the first one, which is titled "Area in Proximity to 220 Snowden Lane."
So just a little bit of context to who we are and why, why we're here. As we look at the overheads here that we've got, this area in proximity to 220 Snowden Lane, I think you'll, you'll note a number of instances identifying front yard setbacks to various selected properties right in the area of the 7503, as well as 7502 and 7505, all surrounding areas. Kind of going into the next slide, area in proximity to 220 Snowden Lane, 750310, with the front yard setbacks, you will see our current property, 220 Snowden Lane, which fronts to Snowden Lane and then has the side yard, Lee Brook, cutting through, where is the, the setback in question for which we're seeking a variance on the 26 feet.
Can you use the cursor to show them which is the lot?
Yeah, can you see my cursor, the small hand there?
Yes, that would be good to you.
That's our current house. There's the side, what, front yard slash side yard going along Lee Brook. You can see the front yard setback on Snowden Lane, which the house faces directly on Snowden is 78 feet. The house, our old house, directly across the street, the setback is 26 with the existing, existing structure to the Lee Brook side and 28 to the Snowden side. You'll also notice throughout the area, as you kind of travel back through Lee Brook Lane, there are a number of homes that have setbacks which admittedly are slightly larger, but only slightly larger than what we currently have at the 220 Snowden Lane, which is the 26 for which we're seeking the variance. Moving one slide forward, which, front yard setbacks, we're traveling down, you can see our home, 220 Snowden, to the bottom left of the slide, traveling down Snowden and identifying Abernathy Drive. There are also, in the same way that going down Lee Brook, you'll find houses with similar setbacks to the one that we currently have. There are houses with frontage that is also similar to the setbacks that we currently have, just to provide some context of the surrounding neighborhood, is really the purpose of those. Now moving on, the partial site plan with the billable lot location. So here's the current, here's Lee Brook, here's Snowden, okay? Here's our current dwelling with the 26-foot setback to the existing garage. We are not encroaching with our proposed plans, we are not encroaching on the existing setbacks, we are simply going up. If one were to, and I'll talk a minute, in a minute about what we're intending to do with the home and show you some visuals of that, if one were to look at the... I think it's worth noting, if you haven't been by it, the house itself sits up and back. There's a beautiful wall that the township has built on the front that wraps around, so having that frontage to Snowden, we think, creates a lot of appeal for the neighborhood and keeps with the character of the neighborhood. I think this gives you a perspective as to the increased height, the slight increased height that we would be having to the garage and to the roof line. I'm going to pause on this for a second, just because it is the only view of the house. When I say we're preserving the house, we mean that in a real way. The brick that you see is staying. There was mention of the front porch. It's the existing front porch is staying. Down to, there are swing doors that are inside the laundry room that we're relocating to a new space of the laundry room, that are old character swing doors. The hardwood floors throughout the home are staying exactly as is. Our previous neighbor, who we were quite close to, when he owned this house, he installed a stairway that his parents donated to him. We're keeping that stairway, in part because of him, but in part because it's beautiful. These are the things that we're trying to do with this home and the existing structure that are very important to us. And as I think you'll hear from a note from one of our neighbors and another of our neighbors in attendance, they agree. Here's another view of the existing house. You will see in the yellow that the building, available building envelope, if, like I said, one were to tear it down. Now, this is what we could potentially, or one could potentially do, without encroaching upon in any way, or asking for a variance, I should say, to the existing twenty-six-foot setback. Essentially, you would be keeping the left side of the house the same, unchanged to the garage, no dormers, and popping something up to the right, which we don't think is in line with the aesthetics of the neighborhood and the character of the neighborhood, which is why, moving on to the final slide, this is the proposed plan. And what we would like to do, assuming we're able to get that variance for the hardship that the well-intended zoning has created with this side yard, this is what we would intend and like to do. So, to give you another glimpse, existing, an option, but we don't think, one, befitting of the neighborhood's character, and what we would propose to do. So, with that, I would just like to just take one moment to read a note that we received and that we were asked to read by one of our neighbors. As neighbors and longtime, yes, am I not allowed to do that?
Are we going to let them do that?
Okay.
You just wanted to get the case to the board, but you do have the supportive neighbor. Okay.
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 Good news, we've got someone over here.
Okay. We have supportive neighbor, and multiple neighbors. So, at what point you want to-
So if you were to open it to the public, that we're case in chief is done.
Yes, I will do that. So, I believe there are people in the audience that wish to address this case. If you wish to, you can come to the lectern, and there is a microphone there. You'll have to affirm that you will tell us truthfully the things that you say, and then we can go.
Ma'am, would you state your name and address for the record?
I'm Kathy Bank, and I'm at two-
I don't think the microphone is on. At least I can't hear if it is.
And Ms. Bank, if you'd raise your right hand, do you swear affirm any testimony you provide this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, I'm here to support our neighbors. They were our neighbors before, and then, out of incredible luck, they're coming back to across the street from us, literally across the street. And, you know, you can't really ask for better neighbors than these two people and their two adorable children. And I have every confidence in them and their thoughtfulness in creating a home that is in keeping with the character of our neighborhood. And I feel like it will do justice to the owner that passed away before, and also make a beautiful home for their family. And I completely, you know, approve and hope that it works out for them.
Good. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to make a comment? No? Okay. Now we can come to my favorite issue. If you- I am always concerned about light pollution. And you are building exterior entrances and so on, which will require light. So I would urge you to accept the condition that we normally try and put on there, which is that the light source should not be visible from, off the property. So you need a screen light. Any light coming out of that fitting must not fall over the property line. I think from where your house is, that last thing should not really be a problem. If you have lighting for the garage, it should be on a timer or activated by a vehicle coming to the garage, so that it's not on all night. I say these things with feeling, because my neighbors across the street violate both of those thoughts.
So-
The other thing, which I don't think, again, you'll have any problems with, you've altered the roof area, not too much the plan for. And so the issue of water drainage, you should deal with that in a manner, and the power engineer really will take care of that, but in a way where water from your roof and so on doesn't go onto neighboring property.
Absolutely, yeah.
Those are the normal conditions. I would add to any approval, a C-two seems appropriate.
And those are obviously acceptable. The last application was a C-two application. This application is, I think, more appropriately a C-one application.
C-one?
C-one.
Okay.
I've asked the applicants to put back up slide number four, which is the plan. He called it the partial site plan.
Okay.
And I want you to-
And the yellow patch makes it a C-one?
I want you to focus on that yellow area. Mr. Bridger and I have had a very pleasant, professional discussion over the past few days about the intent of last December's ordinance change, where the township adopted the boroughs ordinance verbatim. Where, you may not have followed this, but the borough, in the old borough ordinance, you had one front yard. If you were on the corner, you still had one front yard. The township, in its wisdom, has always said that one has two front yards if you're on the corner.
Yeah.
And the ordinance, which was taken verbatim over from the borough, just said, you know, that you measure from the corners. It actually has language that says, if, you know, if you have your primary front and the others your side, because that's true in the borough. That's the way the borough rule works. It's my view that in desire to pass this ordinance by December, they didn't perhaps work it entirely through. Because if you look at this drawing that's in front of you, that's a bizarre result that's brought about by the strict application of the ordinance, where a township lot has two front yards, and you measure, you go all the way down Lee Brook and you measure, you drop out the guy next door who's setback forty-two feet, and you end up with the others where the average is sixty-four feet setback. I also thought it was interesting that here, the garage is setback twenty-six feet, which is just about the same distance as the whole house next door. And as you saw from the drawings, they're going to leave the garage right where it is, one story with a bit of a pitched roof, for another ten feet or so, maybe fifteen feet back to the rear of the garage before any structural addition is made. So that you've got twenty-six feet plus another ten or fifteen feet, that's essentially the way it is now. It's essentially unchanged. So, the structural changes occur behind the garage. So it's an unusual circumstance, in my opinion, one that was brought about recently and perhaps could be looked at again when the borough and the township ordinances are consolidated in the near future.
We should live so long.
Well, it just, I just think folks could keep in mind that this is the result.
Yes.
And the applicant showed you several homes in the neighborhood where that same circumstance exists, that the existing home is quite close. If they're torn down or burned down in a fire, they're going to be in for a variance. And it appears to be a hardship situation. On the negative side, there just appear to be no negatives. It's exactly the same setback as the home on the other side of the street, which is brand-new and handsome, and, or renovated and handsome. And there appears to be no harm to the neighborhood plan if it's like the house across the street and several others up the way.
Okay. Do we have questions? Comment?
I have one question. Did you, when you lived across the street, did you remodel that house, or was that done for you? Before you-
We remodeled it.
I happen to like what you did to that house. I knew the previous owners, and I always felt like that house needed some work. And I hadn't looked at it until I drove by it to look at this house. And I think you did a terrific job on that, and I happen to like this design that you're doing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
It was hard to leave, that's why. We can't believe that we get to live next door. So.
You must like the remodel or live in limbo at least.
Yes, we do.
We do. We like living here.
Any questions or comments?
I think it's a very well-done house.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do.
Thank you.
Okay. So, let us make a decision. Do I have a motion? It's a C-one?
I'll move approve, as a C-one, with the conditions of your life.
Approve.
As a C-one, yes.
Yeah. And you'll accept the little things that I added as conditions?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
You have a second? Could you call the roll for us, in court, here?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floy?
Yes.
Mr. Ockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you, it's approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any other business? If not, we are adjourned.
Thanks. Thank you.
The eighth.
Yes, nice to meet you too.
November eighth and December thirteenth.
December thirteenth.
So, I-